It's working.
I'm clear.
So, ready? Okay. This arts grant program was started in 1986. And it was the first budget after I became mayor that we managed to start an arts grant program. And the town has continued it ever since, except for two hiatus periods due to budgetary concerns. But I think all but four years over that period of time, we've had the arts grants program. And the purpose of it really is to supplement other forms of arts and recreation that the town supplies directly. And this is a way to really extend various, help extend various events to a broader group. A lot of these grants go to people who reduce ticket prices or add venues, that sort of thing. So it's really a way to let the town for relatively, I now say only relatively because people disagree on what's a relatively small amount of money. But relatively, for a small amount of money, you can really expand the programming that's available in the community. And so with that, and I did not name the program after me. It was after I retired, the following council and mayor named the program. So that's how the program got its name.
I'll keep that in mind.
Yes, what the council gives, the council can take away. The first grant this evening is for $1,500 to, oh, and the mayor gives the checks and shakes the hands. I just make the announcements, so. The first grant this evening is $1,500 to the Art Living Memorial Fund, which provides enrichment through the arts, introducing seniors to the creative arts. And Jess Ray. Okay, Jess Ray. The second is to the Brass Band of Central Illinois for $2,500 for their holiday concert. And Stan Kane. Well, I should say they still let me vote as part of the committee on these. Coalescence Theater Project, $4,500 for Crowns, Catherine Brown. Is it? Oh, okay. That's okay. Okay, Bill. That's good. That should be really good. I think that's a good play. That should be. Community Players Theater, $2,000 for the Holiday at Robin Hood Lane, Jessica Hendrick. Crossroads Area Student Theater or CAS, $1,500. This is to support some equipment for them. Connie Beard. You have a very interesting proposal, and I'm interested in high school students doing Canterbury Tales.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
You've crossed out parts, I think. Okay. Further Jazz Inc., $3,000 for jazz films and concerts at the Normal Theater, Glenn Wilson. Those are three concerts, by the way, with a film, right? Film, concert, comments, so. Heartland Productions for the Mike Dobbins Memorial New Plays from the Heartland, $2,500. And who's all coming up? You've got so many. Oh, Gail and Reese. Okay. The manager and the artistic director, so. Illinois Art Station, Saturday's at the station, $4,400, Hannah Johnson. This is the new facility on Vernon, in case you don't know. And so it's, I'm sure Hannah would be glad to give any of you tours of their new facility. Illinois Chamber Music Festival at IWU, $1,800 for guest artists and outreach concerts. And Daria Danova? Yeah, there are a lot of O's in that. Illinois Voices Theater Seedling, Rudolph the Red-Nosed Reindeer Musical, $2,800. Donna Anhold. ISU Symphony Orchestra, $3,500 for musical for all concerts, Dr. David Collier. Of course, you know that that program is for kids who would not ordinarily be able, because of various issues, be able to attend a concert. So it's really a good thing for the community. McLean County Art Center, the Sugar Creek Art Festival, $4,000, Michaelia Harris. Normal West Bands for chamber concerts, $1,000, Kelly Halsey. Prairie Fire Theater, $4,500 for the Man from La Mancha, Ken Sala.
Bob might have been larger. Sorry, must be present to win.
I was wondering, Bob. Where's Bob? He's always here.
He's got my phone.
Does he? Bob likes checks, I know. Prairie Pride Coalition for the production of the musical Fun Home, $4,500, Dave Betland. Is that also at the Normal? Where's that at? At Heartland Community College, okay. There's a lot of theater going on at Heartland Community College from various groups, so. This one is PT.FWD. PT Forward.
Point forward.
For their fifth anniversary season, to help them with various things doing for their 35th anniversary season, $3,250, Eddie Breitweiser. Okay. Is there anybody here for Share the Music? 1,225? Okay. You're not Mark Miller.
Join the bits deal.
Okay. Twin Cities School of Dance, $4,000. Special Friday performances for the Nutcracker at Brayton Auditorium, Jeanne Phillips. And U.S.A. Ballet, $4,000 for community outreach, Dr. Ken Bellum. Bellum allows them both to reduce ticket prices and go to more venues with their production. YWCA McLean County, Young Wonders Sensory Art Program, $1,670, Diana Benzer. And I think we're out of checks and names, so that's it for this evening. Thank you for all doing.
I'll just say, without what you do, we'd be a much poorer community. So thank you for doing it. Our little bit to help to keep you alive and vital, we're more than happy to do. Keep doing what you're doing.
We got done in 10 minutes tonight. Usually it takes long. We're good.
Thank you. You got candy. What's that? Mr. Sweet. I did not. Mayor, you missed a good one.
I bet I did.
We had him last.
So.
You doing all right?
I didn't get that.
Call or order a meeting for the Normal Town Council for July 18th, 2022. Please call the roll.
Mirakus?
Here.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Here.
Mr. Nord?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Ms. Cummings?
Here.
Mr. Preston?
Here.
Mr. McCarthy?
Here.
We'll begin with a Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have one public comment tonight from Ravi Devuri, or a representative of the ACLU.
I'm not sure if your microphone's on, Mayor, is it on?
It's on. Just take any one of the seats there, and I'll just ask you to state your name for the record, and you have three minutes of comment.
My name is Ravi Devuri. I am here representing the Central Illinois Chapter of the American Civil Liberties Union. We at the ACLU would like to express our concerns about the town of Normal's intent to contract with Flock Safety to purchase and deploy automated license plate reading cameras. Personally, as a strong advocate for digital privacy and security rights, I'm very resistant to anything that expands surveillance and data collection, especially the wholesale aggregation of personally identifiable data. We are all concerned about public safety, and we should ensure that law enforcement has the appropriate tools to effectively and efficiently solve major crimes. When used properly, and I must stress with appropriate safeguards, cameras can be a powerful tool to aid investigations. However, we cannot and we should not allow a heightened sense of fear and urgency to override logic and cause us to rush into hasty decisions and that will approve and even welcome in unchecked and unaccountable pervasive surveillance. We encourage you to carefully review the terms of the contract with Flock Safety, which are extremely unfavorable to the town of Normal and its residents, and fail to address basic privacy and security concerns. The proposed agreement with Flock is their standard contract, which the ACLU thoroughly reviewed when Bloomington was considering these cameras. The contract is found to be extremely unfavorable to the municipality, its residents, and even to law enforcement. For example, the agreement allows Flock to outsource without restriction any and all provision of services to unbedded third parties without requiring certification that those third parties have satisfied security and privacy standards. They give Flock the authority to build the city for a wide array of supplemental and third-party costs without advance notice or approval. They lack any service-level guarantees, which is a glaring omission for any tech contract. The contract, the agreement will also require the town of Normal and the Normal Police to identify Flock for any and all liability arising from the use or misuse of the cameras or its data, leaving the taxpayers of Normal potentially on the hook for the malfeasance of data users, not only locally, but clear across the other country if they have access to this data. In addition, there are several, excuse me, there are several concerns with the agreement pertaining to the privacy of residents and the security of their data. The agreement fails to adequately identify key terms, such as suspected vehicles, and is vague in other definitions, such as the purposes to which the system can be used. The agreement does not include any information or requirements about logging usage of the system, the creation of audit logs, or any other basic measures of accountability. It lacks any password or user requirements, has no requirements for suspending users or revoking access, and in general has no provision for access control within the contract. It lacks meaningful and necessary limitations on ALPR data. The agreement only expressly prohibits tracking activities, which again is not defined within the contract. The agreement also lacks definition and delineation of the different types of users that can be authorized, including non-agency users. We know that Flock has data-sharing options that do allow, that they market, that share this data to any commercial user as well as governmental user. So the data could potentially be available to any private user, organization user, or even homeowners association as per these cameras.
Mr. Devuri, I'm going to ask you to wrap it up if you could.
I thought organizations had six minutes.
Five minutes, you're right.
And I'm closing anyway, so. The risk to privacy, the security of residents and identifiable information, as well as discreet time and place geolocation information, and the civil liberties guaranteed to us in the Constitution of the United States is too great to accept the vagaries and critical omissions of the Flock contract. In Bloomington, we were able to review the police department's proposed policy for use of the cameras and identified several gaps in that framework. We have not had the chance to review Normal's specific policy, but we are concerned that we may find similar gaps in that policy. And that's on us. I don't know if that's been made available. I know that we, our organization, have not had the opportunity to review this contract. But we do have those concerns, including, you know, they did not clearly stake out that they would not use it for immigration control purposes or the kinds of crimes that it would be used for. A new development has come recently in the repeal of Roe versus Wade and the fracturing of laws state by state relating to the access to women's reproductive health care. ALPRs represent a serious threat to the privacy and security of women who may be coming to Illinois and come to Bloomington Normal to seek health care, but who may be at risk for having their data accessed by out-of-state agencies who may criminalize the act of seeking abortions. In short, the ACLU of Central Illinois does urge you to consider not approving this contract, and if you do wish to, to seriously consider and examine the contract before you. Thank you.
We move to the omnibus agenda items considered routine and will be taken with one vote unless a council member would like to pull an item for discussion. Mr. Nord?
I'd like to pull item B as in Boy and E as in Edward.
Motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Items considered under the omnibus are approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting of July 5th, 2022, a resolution to accept bids and award a contract to Roe Construction, a division of United Contractors Midwest for the Landmark Drive and Parkway Plaza Drive intersection improvements in the amount of $76,563.15. A motion to reject bids for the 2022 Beach Street pavement replacement project, a resolution conditionally approving a final plat of the Yordi subdivision, that's property at the southwest corner of West College and I-55, and a resolution approving a site plan for the property at the southwest corner of West College and I-55, also again the Yordi mini storage. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Cummings?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mayor Kus?
Aye. Those items are approved. Item B is a report to receive and file town abnormal expenditures for payment as of July 13th, 2022. Mr. Nord?
I saw move.
Second.
Mr. Nord?
Thank you. On PDF page 12 or page two of the expenses, under Administration, City Manager, General Expense, there's an expense to Witsit and Associate, an appraisal fee for $2,500. What is this expense for?
Um, Witsit in, Witsit is an appraisal firm that we have used. They did, they performed an appraisal for one of the uptown properties that we own. I believe that was for 104 East Beaufort.
So this is for a potential sale of that property? Is that the reason for it?
If it, yeah, in case we choose to dispose of that property in the future.
Okay. And then on PDF page 20, which is expense page nine, there is, is this the right one? This would be the charge. Oh, wait, no, this one's for the air raiders. Air raider repairs? We just voted on putting in air raiders? Are these air raiders that we just put in? Or is there, are these like older ones that the warranty has since expired?
Oh, under park maintenance? We have air raiders in a number of locations, so this would be repairs for at least one or more of the installations. I can explore that further, but we have done air raider installations over a number of years.
Are they warranted when we first put them in?
Um, I believe so. But again, we've been installing air raiders annually for the last few years.
Okay, so it's just the last few years. And I just want to make sure that if there was a warranty, that the warranty covered what it did, because these are, seem like they're parts.
Okay.
All right, and then PDF page 30, under, which is expense page 20. These are snow plows that we're purchasing with, again, water enterprise funds. And I've brought up the concern before that enterprise funds are, we've told the public that enterprise funds are to be used for that enterprise and all the expenses within that enterprise. And plowing snow is not what we set up the water system to do. So I've spoken this issue before, and you know, it's been, I've asked the state's attorney to look into it, and I know Mr. Day's aware of this, just to see what it is, because I know the town's position has been that because we are a because of the way our municipality is set up, we don't have to follow all these state statutes, which I disagree. Thank you.
Well, I'll just note, Mr. Nord, that that was well answered by town attorney. The issue was clearly stated in a previous meeting, but if you'd like to circle back with him and verify that indeed he was correct in that or not, I would encourage you to do so.
Sure, just realized that Cook County just got hit with $250 million, and their excuse was because they were home rule, they didn't have to follow the statutes as well. And the Supreme Court ruled that they do. If the statute gives you power, you have to follow any restrictions within it. So that's why I've deferred it on to the state's attorney and, you know, then to the Attorney General. Thank you.
Further on this item? Please call the roll.
Mr. Nord?
No.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Cummings?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Kus?
Aye. That item is approved. Item E is a resolution conditionally approving a final plat for the 11th addition to the Vineyard subdivision, and that's at the southeast corner of the Vineyard subdivision. Mr. Nord?
Um, I just wanted to
I need a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Nord?
Um, so I just wanted to put on the record, council is not approving whether sanitary sewer tap-on fees are charged or not. But I wanted to point out that this development is outside of the sanitary sewer tap-on fee map that staff provided us when the development on Carrick Road came before us and staff chose not to charge them a sanitary sewer tap-on fee. So they're both listed the same, but the one on Carrick Road, even in the annexation agreement, it called for a sanitary sewer tap-on fee to be paid. So just wanted that on the record in case the developer wanted to challenge the town that everybody's been made aware. Thank you.
Right. We have, we have discussed this on numerous occasions. I will point out, just for clarification, there is an annexation agreement relative to Vineyards subdivision. There was an annexation agreement at one time that pertained to the Carrick Road property. I think we're referring to, at the time, it was the Wildwood property. That, as I've explained to council, that annexation agreement was voided through various lawsuits associated with the former developer and was not in existence at the time we moved into our redevelopment agreement with Phoenix Investors. Mr. Day?
Yeah, with respect to the Wildwood annexation agreement, there was a provision in that agreement saying that a certain buyer had to purchase the property in order for that annexation agreement to take effect. That a buyer in fact did not purchase the property, somebody else did, and the provisions of that annexation agreement didn't go into effect. So when the town annexed that property, it annexed it just with the new buyer, not under the terms of the annexation agreement. But then the original buyer then had a bunch of legal issues and ended up in bankruptcy as well, which would have discharged those duties.
Further on this item, Mr. Nord?
That property, the town let get built, I mean, the warehouse was almost half done. I don't think that, well, I think we need to look at our processes and make sure that annexation happens prior to any of the work getting done, so we don't get in a spot like this before. But aside from the annexation agreement, the tap-on fee map still shows that this property before us is outside of that tap-on fee area. Thank you.
Further on this item? Ms. Smith?
I just wanted to highlight for the record that this subdivision includes provisions for 23 additional private homes.
Please call the roll.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Cummings?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Mayor Kus?
Aye. That item is approved. We move to general orders. First item is a resolution conditionally approving an amended site plan with a special use permit for a large-scale wind turbine at 100 North Rivian Motorway.
Move approval?
Second.
This is our discussion on this item. Mr. Nord?
Um, thank you. I had the pleasure of speaking with representatives from Rivian before this meeting, so they answered a lot of my questions. But one for staff is, the code requires occupied buildings to be 1.5 times the distance from the top of the, of the windmill structure. And I know it allows for a 1.1 waiver, which is what Rivian's doing for their structure, or for their occupied building. But this is about 1.1 away from the neighboring property line with a different owner. So if they build a building, they will have to be 1.5 away from the top of this tower. So now we're intruding into this neighboring property owner's property for where they could potentially build a building unless they want to take, you know, the safety waiver option as well. So I'd like to hear from staff as to what type of permission or conversation we've had with that neighboring property owner.
Sure. Mr. Day, I'm unaware of any conversations that the town has initiated with neighboring property owners. Mr. Day, are you familiar with the situation?
No, outside of the general public hearing process that we've been through.
Right, and notification would have been made to neighboring property owner?
Yes, I believe, in fact, Rivian had a number of open houses and meetings with surrounding property owners.
The property owners, I mean, this is Mitsubishi, you know, they're not here, so it's a representative. Just putting something in our local paper doesn't give them proper, proper notice. Have they been reached out? Because they are going to be giving up, you know, about, what, 280 feet of buildable property, and it's going to intrude in there. They should have, by property rights, some official notice given to them.
We did, we do send information out through U.S. Postal Service to every property owner.
Okay. Was there, are you able to confirm that they received it? Were they represented? Because you've given
Send certified mail, Mr. Nord.
You've sent me certified mail.
Well, I handed it to you. I handed you my certified mail, but the, no, I'm just, I'm telling you, I'm unaware that we have had personal conversations with any of the neighbors to Rivian, but we notify adjacent property owners of the process. That's all I can assure you of.
Okay.
And if there's concerns about whether or not a neighboring property owner knows or knows enough about the situation, then I would suggest, and I just don't have a solution for that, because I don't know that we've been able to communicate with every property owner about, or adjacent property owner about what the risk could be to their property.
Yeah, there's, there's just one property that's within that 1.5 times. And, you know, this is a brand-new ordinance. We've never had large-scale windmills allowed in town. You know, so it could be, or by ordinance, we've never allowed it. So that is a concern of mine that we should reach out to them, because I would like to hear from them before the town is now put in the hot water that, hey, they're not comfortable with taking a distance waiver, and now they're putting their hand out saying, hey, you owe us, you owe us money because you took away that from us. Then another question is the height of this? Was, I believe it was 550 feet, is that right?
500 feet?
Is it 500 or 550?
500.
500 feet.
Did it list that there was a maximum of 550 somewhere? Oh, 550 from a distribution building. Okay, so that was the distance. Nope, then all I have is just the property rights question.
Thank you. And Mr. Nord, I'd ask you going forward, if questions like this, it would be very, very helpful for everyone involved if you'd ask those questions prior to coming to the table and doing that. I think it would be helpful for staff to have awareness of issues that you might have so that they can adequately answer the question.
I would love to ask questions, but as Ms. Reese has put out before, she won't answer my questions unless my peer council members instruct her to, or you. So, you know, you're asking me to ask questions, but then on the, on the other side, I don't get answers when I ask questions.
That is a false statement, Mr. Nord.
Well, then I'll publish the email
Ms. Smith?
That has gone to the council many times.
I, I just want to provide the clarification that this turbine is set at 500 feet. And for context, the Heartland Community College turbine is just under 400 feet. And the tower, the Eiffel Tower in downtown Bloomington is 410 feet in height. And the county recently, in reading the documents attached to the packet, the county recently approved a maximum of 550. And during the discussion at the planning meeting where this was first presented, there were no public comments present, and there was a discussion of how these larger turbines are responsible for generating greater quantities of energy. And that is one of the reasons why Rivian is pursuing this, this height. And as to notice being satisfied by U.S. Mail, as an accountant, I can tell you that the IRS recognizes certified mail as delivered. And I keep in touch with a former exchange student from Japan, and I can testify to the fact that U.S. Mail does make it to that country. So I, I'm satisfied that sufficient notice was pursued in accordance with the process in place. Thank you.
Mr. McCarthy?
Thank you. I won't go over what my colleague Ms. Smith just did, but I do want to highlight that I believe the packet mentioned that Rivian also reached out to everybody around the property and concerned. And so between the town and the public hearing process and Rivian reaching out, and I'm quite certain that we, everybody involved gave it a good college try to make sure that everybody was communicated with in advance and had ample opportunity to, to give input if they were so concerned about it, which I sincerely appreciate, both the, the company and of course, the normal course of our town planning process to contact everybody. But also the company going out on its own and attempting to contact residents around really isn't above and beyond that we typically don't see. So kudos to the company for being so proactive.
Further on this item? Mr. Nord?
Um, just to be clear, I mean, since this is a big issue, you know, property rights, they're not going to be able to build within a couple hundred feet of what they could have before. If you say Rivian has reached out to them, then, you know, I would like to hear if Rivian has a statement from them saying that they are okay with this additional setback that I guess they're going to have to have.
Mr. Nord, I, I think you're leading into a point that you've had this conversation with the property owner and their concern. Is that accurate?
Well, Mr. McCarthy said that Rivian had reached out to folks as well. So if Rivian has reached out to them and they have given their blessing, then I would like to hear that, because that is going to make me vote yes versus right now, no. And that is a deciding decision for me.
No, we're not doing that tonight. Mr. Verder, Preston, I'm sorry.
Thanks, Mayor. So, picking up on that, it, the setback going from the 1.5 times height to 1.1, it, section 15, point 15, point 2 dash 6D allows the landowner to request a waiver to permit the wind energy facility to be as close as 1.1 times. Requesting a waiver, is that something that the, let's see, is that something that the neighboring property that Mr. Nord was referencing could request a waiver down the line for them to be able to build up to the 1.1, which sounds like it will roughly be where the property line is? And how does that waiver process go? Who determines? And by, I mean, I assume there's standard criteria as to whether that's approved or denied?
Yes, that would be covered in the, in the municipal code, and waiver would go to planning commission, I believe. Mr. Day?
I, I don't have the code right in front of me, but no, I believe the waivers just doesn't require any specific approval. It is a recordable document that just proves that there was a waiver that they file with the county recorder, showing that there was a waiver on the property so that future property owners will have noticed that it's within that 1.1, rather than the 1.5 setback requirement. But there's no special other types of requirements. It's just filling out the waiver form.
So if the adjacent property owner that we're referencing, if they, do they have to get approval, or do they just file something as like a statement that they're exercising the waiver? Okay.
Yes, that's my belief, yes.
That they would just file it recognizing that they're, they're willing to accept the 1.1?
Right, yeah, it's not like a special waiver that comes back to planning commission or council and then special approval. It's more of a, you fill out the form saying you've waived that specific right, and then that gets recorded with the county.
So if they
Future landowners.
All right, so if the neighboring property owner wants to build an occupied building closer to the property line that would fall within the 1.5 and the 1.1 times, it would be within their control to do that. They would not be subject to any approval by anything with the town. They would just have to file something, and it would be done to where the control of that is in the property owner's hands, the adjacent property owner, not seeking our approval first.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, I, I agree.
Further on this item? Please call the roll.
Ms. Cummings?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
No.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Kus?
Aye. The resolution is approved. Item A is ordinance authorizing donation of a parcel of property located at 316 Glen located at 316 Glen Avenue to youth build McLean County.
Move of approval.
Thank you.
Tuck it.
Is there discussion on this item? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Cummings?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye, that ordinance is approved. Item 9 is a resolution waiving the formal bidding process.
Move of approval. Oops. All right.
Where was I? Uh, ordinance, uh, resolution waiving the formal bidding process requirements and executing an agreement with Flock Safety for the purpose of automatic license plates, uh, reading, uh, reader data in the amount of $83,550.
Move of approval.
Tuck it.
Thank you.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mayor. I'm going to, um, ask Chief Patrilli to come forward and be, um, available if council has questions. Included in the packet is, uh, chief's report. As you know, we've been working on this issue for a couple of months. Council had a work session, and thank you to our Flock representative who has joined Chief Patrilli. Council had a work session in June to discuss this initiative. It's not new to the community, but I appreciate hearing some of the comments we've heard that have been shared with us. And, and in the packet this evening, we have what I think is a, a detailed council report on what we are asking in terms of the quantity of, um, camera installations and, um, the, the request to waive bids and move forward with Flock. And, um, we also have included the contract, of course, with Flock as well as, um, chief's directive for the department. And we included a, uh, a map indicating a location of where we would propose installations occur. So I feel like we have been, um, quite transparent with our intentions and I look forward to the conversation. We would like to, um, ask council to support this initiative so we can move forward and, um, use this as a tool for our law enforcement officers.
I would just like to add, uh, my thank you to my fellow council members here for spending, uh, a very strong amount of time and effort to really try to understand this issue going forward. This has been a, uh, an issue of concern for the community and a concern for the members of this council, so thank you for all the time that you've spent on it researching this, asking the questions that you've asked to, to really get a good understanding of where we're going with this. Can anyone want to start here? Ms. Lorenz?
Thank you. Um, so I, um, did have a question on the agreement, a couple of questions. It's in section four of the agreement confidentiality agency data. And maybe some of this will address, uh, the concerns outlined by our public commenter earlier. There's a lot here that's describing, um, the protection of the, of the data in that section. And I was just wondering if you could summarize that for us, maybe in more layman's terms? And in particular, maybe end with an answer to this question. Would there, in any circumstances, be a situation where a non-law enforcement purpose could get access to that data? Coupling what we see in this agreement with, I'm hoping you know, uh, what's in the policy too, or maybe Chief Patrilli could speak to that, but between the two documents, you know, that, that last question being, what circumstances might there be where a non-law enforcement purpose would be, third party would be able to gain access? So, um, kind of a two-part question, the summary of section, uh, four and then an answer to that question.
Do you want to start that?
Sure.
That's probably appropriate for you to address first.
Thank you, everybody. My name is Josh Thomas. I represent Flock Safety. Uh, the summary is basically, uh, you own the data, we don't. You get to authorize who has access to it, we do not. Uh, we cannot sell it for commercial purposes. Um, we can't access it unless, uh, the administrator, the chief of police asks us to, to troubleshoot an issue. Otherwise, we cannot, um, we don't own it. So that's the, the gist of that section, I believe. I don't have it in front of me, but I believe that's what we're talking about.
Why didn't you just say that?
Sorry.
Teasing. It goes on for like a page and a half.
I'm sure it does.
Well, I think the second question is, uh, really more of a, a chief question in terms of, is there at all an instance where non-law enforcement would have access to, um, this, the Flock information?
There's not. The way that our policy is structured, it's a straight, uh, 30-day retention, um, on the, on the data unless it is pulled for some legitimate law enforcement purpose, i.e. criminal investigation or some type of community caretaking function like an Amber Alert, Silver Alert, something along those lines.
Right, right. So in a follow-up question, again, on, um, protection of the data, it wasn't completely clear to me, um, how many roughly users you anticipate having access? Because in your policy, you delineate that there will be certain, uh, members of your staff who do have it and it'll be for, you know, a need-to-know reason. Roughly, how many users do you see assigning user IDs to?
So that, the, the user IDs will be assigned to all sworn staff.
Okay.
There is a workflow and a vetting process that goes into that. We have, it's referenced, the hot list is referenced in the policy. Um, there is a workflow for that that goes through the investigations lieutenant to have any type of hot listing, uh, done. It's in conjunction with some type of criminal predicate, some type of crime. But outside of that, the end users will be the patrol officers on the street that will have access, uh, to the data, um, to the system in accordance with the policy.
Okay, okay. All right, so in essence, as I saw where you have the suggested, um, locations laid out, interestingly, I will go through one of those intersections at least a half a dozen times. So I'll wave, but if I understand this correctly, I will go through 10 or 12 times a day and presuming I'm not in trouble for anything, I'm just background noise. I won't alert anything. Is that a true statement?
Exactly.
And you will never really know that I've gone through?
Exactly.
Okay.
And they won't know that you waved or not.
Darn it.
This is going to see the back of your vehicle.
All right, so, you know, I guess in, in general, um, I'll just finish with, um, you know, I've, I've spoken with a couple of people in law enforcement and involved with prosecuting crimes. And to a person, um, they have said that this is, um, this is a tool that technology allows us to have. And as I think a council, we have provided technological tools to a number of our departments. You know, everything from new computers to, um, you know, FOIA software, you know, you name it. And so this is a tool for which we have technology. And, um, I think that this is important for law enforcement. And, um, and I do acknowledge the, the comments made by our representative from the ACLU. Those are valid comments. It seemed to me like perhaps they had not had a chance to read your policy because I think that would answer quite a few of the questions that were, were raised. And the concern about the third-party outsourcing, if I understand your answer, that would not happen without our permission. Is that a true statement?
In regards to access to the data, you are correct.
Okay, okay. So, um, I, you know, I think where we're at with, um, the risk for crimes, where we are as a country, as a nation, we need to outfit our, our, um, public safety officials with the best tools we can. And so for that reason, I support this. Thank you.
Ms. Smith?
To, to follow up on some of Mrs. Lorenz's questioning, if, if Mr. Day could weigh in on how FOIA might align with, uh, any requests for data, would there ever be an occasion when a FOIA request would, um, allow someone in the public to gain access to the data that the, um, Town of Normal Police Department has because of their use of this system? And please speak into the mic.
Right.
Can you hear me now?
I can, thank you.
So as you mentioned, once the police download it and it becomes part of the police report, then that is basically part of the police report that would be subject to the general FOIA considerations that we have. So once the police go into the system, download whatever it is that they're downloading, from the Flock system, which then will become a police record, in that case, it would be subject to FOIA in the same way that anything else is subject to FOIA. But until that point, it's not a record that the police would have any, um, access to or control over until it's downloaded for their specific law enforcement purposes.
If, if the information that has been downloaded becomes part of an active investigation, is that, um, subject to release because of a FOIA request?
Uh, not, well, it would, the same considerations for FOIA exemptions that would apply to any other police reports. For instance, if it were body cam footage or dash cam footage or some of the other types of footage or other video we may have involved with a police report, we would apply the same considerations with respect to exemptions that would apply for other police report materials.
And, um, the gentleman from ACLU was raising the point that the contract is a, a boilerplate from Flock, but acknowledged that they, ACLU had not had the opportunity to vet the Town of Normal policy that has been created for the usage of this system. Does it matter whether or not it's in the contract or in the policy?
Well, certainly the two documents will interplay together. I would push back a little bit that this is the same boilerplate. We started with their boilerplate, but we did make some fairly significant changes to what is in the contract, uh, with Flock. We didn't just take their initial contract. We had some issues with cameraship, who owned the cameras.
Mr. Day, if you could talk a little bit louder, please. You're gonna have to like hold it like-
Yeah, we did some pretty significant revisions to the contract. So it's not the standard boilerplate. Uh, we do have some specialized provisions that apply to the Town of Normal.
Okay.
But, yeah, in terms of the documents, it's this contract and the way that the, um, the police directive will work in conjunction with each other.
Okay, and as terms of the alarm that is raised about homeowners associations accessing the information, I do want to share that the Washington Post had an article on this camera system and it was specifically installed by a homeowners association. And I think that that circumstance is, um, very, very divorced from the circumstances we're talking about here. I had had a question about the number of cameras. And, um, Chief, if you could explain beyond the positioning of the cameras, why you need two cameras at, at several locations?
So the, the locations where you probably see the majority of two cameras is based on the amount of lanes, uh, for coverage. So the perfect example of that is Veterans Parkway. I believe it's one camera for every two lanes is the effective, uh, range for the camera. So to be able to cover all three lanes of traffic, we would have to put two cameras in a location to make sure that we had adequately covered, um, all the lanes of traffic in that area.
If, if you will pardon me while I check down because I don't want to waste my call and I'm going to have to go from memory. Um, wait a minute, no, I don't. And, and one of the questions I, I raised was a concern over the possibility of, um, a plate being switched unknowingly to somebody's car that, that might be flagged. Could you discuss for everyone the vetting that will be done before a traffic stop is pursued? Because I know traffic stops can be a highly charged situation and sometimes dangerous for minority citizens. So what is the process that will be pursued before, uh, officers decide that they will in fact implement a traffic stop because of a flagged tag?
So that's very similar to, uh, how we operate now. But specific to your question, a simple alert by the system is not reasonable suspicion and that is not probable cause to stop a vehicle. It would be no different than even if we weren't using the system as we operate today, just because we have a suspect, uh, vehicle description, there's a vetting process that goes into that before an officer would ever perform a traffic stop. So those same rules will apply, uh, to the Flock system. That alert that happens in the car is now an indicator. It's more like an intelligence, hey, that you've gotten an alert on a car for a specific reason. And then it's up to the officer, you know, through their training and experience to go ahead and vet the information that they have and decide if enforcement action is warranted at that time.
And, um, for Flock Company, um, one council member had expressed a, raised a question about whether or not there's any association on your board, but your funding is from venture capitalists at this point, isn't it?
That's right, yeah.
So, um, and-
Yeah, yeah, there's no one from the Town of Normal on our board.
Okay. And, one more question? And, and Chief, would you, um, explain the attractiveness of using the Flock system because of where else it's employed in Illinois?
Yes, now, um, the Flock Safety cameras are in over 100 municipalities just in Illinois. And they offer a very unique interoperability, uh, with other agencies that will allow us to collaborate with other law enforcement, um, agencies and partners as it relates to legitimate law enforcement purposes, i.e. investigations, uh, things of that nature.
And, and I do want to commend the town staff because I was unable to be present for the work session and, um, the town staff went out of their way to provide remedial session for myself and Mr. Preston and has been, uh, very, uh, forthcoming in responses to queries and questions. So thank you very much for making that time.
You're welcome.
Ms. Cummings?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I do want to, um, kind of start off my comments, um, thanking, uh, staff for taking the time to meet with me, not because I missed the working session, but, um, my, uh, geek brain about data started working and so I needed some additional clarifications. And so they spent the time, um, allowing me to do my second job in their space, which is, uh, diving through from an architecture standpoint and saying, hey, how are we doing this and how we're building this? So I want to say thank you for being patient with me. What I did want to, and you guys, please feel free to jump in, I guess there were some concerns I had listening to some of the, um, to some comments that have been made. And after doing some digging and some research and asking some questions, I guess it's, it's, it's upon us to, to share, and I think this has been shared before, that the agreement and the policy have to work hand in hand. They're, they're not siloed, um, from one another in order for us to, um, operate and operate successfully. When you're dealing with data, it is very, um, important that you have policies in place. And my understanding is the reason why there is fear for something like this is that not every community that implores this actually has a policy behind it. They only have the agreement in place, which does have gaps. The great thing about our staff is that the first thing that they knew we needed was a policy so that we could protect not only, um, the town as the entity, but our residents, um, also as well. So I certainly want to commend you on that for saying, hey, we know that we, we need to take the time to put a policy in place because the agreement itself is not sufficient and meets the requirements. My understanding, even from the working session, that there was many groups that have, um, have reviewed the policy and were okay with the policy. Some of those, um, some of those groups, including the NAACP, I believe was mentioned, as being part of that, that, the grouping who had saw the policy, um, to ensure that there was no infringement of rights and things of that nature. Also, what was kind of stated before, and I think is important to share, that the, all we're getting is just the license plate information, which is not in itself, um, by itself because of the fact of switching of license plates is not personally identifiable information. What makes it become identi- personally identifiable information is the compilation of other sources we already use today, which will give you name, address, telephone number, but that is already accessible. is already accessible to us even without having these cameras. So, I do want residents to know that, so it's not in itself identifiable information. It's only paired with information we already pool today from other sources, more than likely using APIs, I'm sure. The, the other thing I think is worth noting is the fact that the time that was taken, or I should say, the consideration to make sure appropriate language was used within the policy. And we've talked about that as well, to make sure that we are protecting our residents, so that we don't have the unnecessary stop issues, that already things that we have in place for even immigrants and things of that nature, that those things will not change just because we have this, this new tech, piece of technology, as it was stated before. So, I commend us for making sure that this doesn't change who we are and what we've known to do, and how we have been known to be mindful of what can be, can be mis, as seen as misuse of things. And so, I hope and I believe that we have a capable enough staff to be able to work through this, and it be another positive for our community. We're not the only community that use it. Again, we're one that was wise enough to put a policy in place, to ensure that we address the concerns, and we make sure. The other thing is that I did, I know that ACLU says that their standardized positioning is to not have them, but in case if you decide to use them, there was a checklist of things they wanted to be implored, or put into practice, and I went through the checklist, and we checked off the checkboxes. So, I believe that we've done our due diligence, that as a community, as we move forward, that we'll make sure that it's being utilized in an appropriate way, and so that it is something that will safeguard from, in situations of missing persons, or missing children, and things of that nature, that can be a positive for us in the future.
Mr. Nord?
So, I don't know that I've got a lot of questions about the technology. The map, when I saw where all the cameras were going, I mean, to speak to Councilman Lorenz's point, it is throughout the, it is throughout the town. It's not just on the perimeter to check people coming in and out of the community. So, you know, I urge residents to look, to see just, it's scattered about, and you're right, you're probably not going to travel the town without being captured by at least one of these cameras, and that data is stored until it's retrieved, you know, until, I guess, the data's been purged out. So, I want to make that clear. I appreciate the potential use and benefits of this technology. You know, it could have solved a lot of crimes, I'm sure. But, with the tools, it also, you know, there's the ability for it to be misused. And I'd mentioned before, whenever this came, that I'd be looking for some sort of, some sort of controls beyond policies, because policies are just written and you're relying on people to follow those policies. My understanding, this, the oversight, there's nobody outside the town that's going to oversee this, right? These are all internal policies that the department's going to be administering?
Or the police department, yes, that's correct.
Okay. So, that I'm not, that I'm not supportive of. You know, I believe in checks and balances. We give you the powers, you know, government has all kinds of power, and there is built-in checks and balances. This, we don't, we don't have. You know, generally, yes, I trust our police, our law enforcement, but historically, we can look, there's always bad eggs. You know, Normal, for example, we had an officer take $12,000 allegedly from a crime scene. Then, how long have you been on the force? Have you been here for 16 years?
Twenty-three.
All right, do you remember the name, Jeff Pilo?
Yes.
Okay. So, Jeff Pilo, for the folks that don't know. Let me just read a little bit. So-
Point of order, Mayor.
Okay.
I think that's a, human resources also issued to discuss that at this time.
Yeah, I think, Mr. Nord, I think you've made your point. You don't have to read that. We understand your point.
Then, I'm not going to read, I'm not going to read this, but let me explain to you what I'm talking about. So, Jeff Pilo was an officer in Bloomington.
Mr. Nord, we're not going to talk about Jeff Pilo. We are not talking about Jeff Pilo.
But, it is absolutely critical to having outside oversight.
Mr., we understand your point.
Okay.
We understand that.
Well, then, the, the potential for this data in the wrong hands. Somebody can use this and find someone's routine, okay? Simply just look it up. They don't have to go through the effort of watching them, following them, they plug it in, and they'll get the routine over a course of 30 days. And without outside oversight to look at this, then I'm concerned that there's the potential for abuse. And with police policing themselves, nobody wants to say, hey, we've got an internal problem. I mean, the town of Normal doesn't want that. We even have given nondisclosure agreements to town staff when they're let go, not to, or not nondisclosure, but nondisparagement, that under threat of lawsuit, they can't say something negative that they witnessed while they were unemployed.
Mr. Nord, get to your point.
So, this all goes to trust, and why I would like some sort of outside oversight, because I do not want to be the person that approved giving the ability to use this information, just like the AEGIS system, which is what, you know, this officer abused, and got sentenced to over 400 years in prison for raping people in our community. I want that oversight, that, that outside-
Point of order taken. Mr. Nord, you've been cautioned not to bring up that issue multiple times. Do not bring it up, or I'm going to cut your time short.
Okay, and, you know, other agencies, Bloomington, they have got an outside group that people can look to, to say, hey, can you look into this? You know, they can even do it anonymously. We don't have that. So, normally, I would have said yes to this, but as I spoke with you on the phone, my big hurdle is the accountability and no outside oversight. And if we had that, then I would be supportive, and I urge everyone to look up Jeff Pilo.
Ms. Smith.
I'm sorry?
Ms. Smith.
I believe the expression is trust but verify. You mentioned in your discussion that there will be unique ID numbers assigned to anyone logging into the system, and there's discussion in the exchanges we've had about audits, internal audits that will be done. Could you expand on that, Chief?
Sure, yeah. Everyone that accesses the system will have a unique username and password, very similar to all the other databases that we manage on a daily basis. In the monthly reporting by the Investigations Lieutenant, he'll be doing random checks every month, so just pulling random queries to make sure that the system's being used in accordance with policy. If we were to identify a situation where that wasn't happening, we've got internal controls already in place to address that.
And I'm, I'm seeking a clarification for the wording of this. It talks about the purchase of automatic license plate reader data. We're actually leasing the cameras, but purchasing the data?
Yes, that's, that's how it works. And, and in addition, because through our procurement process, we did not seek quotes or proposals, we're asking council to waive bids to go with this particular system that is used with other law enforcement agencies.
And, and for the representative from Flock Safety, can you speak to the measures you take to ensure the, the protection of your cyber, your cybersecurity measures?
Oh, sure. Yeah, there's lots of things that we do. So, SOC 2 compliance is a, is a great example of one, if you are familiar with that. All of the users at Flock, every employee, there's over 500 of us, have to go through a security compliance training. Oftentimes, the number one security risk is a human, you know, clicking a phishing email or something to that effect. So, we all have to go through that. We are randomly white hat hackers. We have those groups who are coming, who are trying to penetrate our system. We are, we hire them to try to hack us. They have been unsuccessful to date. We also, our hardware devices have no remote IP address, so there's, it's technically impossible to remotely hack our system. They're all, all the data is being hosted in Amazon Web Services Government Cloud, which uses AES 256 encryption. It's the highest level standard of encryption. Your data is partitioned off in a separate silo away from any other customer that we have, so the data will not get mixed in with any other data. As you were mentioning earlier, we do sell our technology to HOAs and businesses. Their data is theirs, that they own, and it's, again, separate and siloed from any other data that's, that's out there. So, that, that's a pretty large order.
And the employees working on your system, are they subject to any background checks?
Oh, yeah, yeah, everybody's with their background checked over at Flock.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Lorenz?
Yeah, I had one other question that I failed to ask before, and it's for Josh from Flock, and that's the point, also in Section 4, 4.4, about, it discusses about how you could potentially use the data for aggregate purposes. Can you explain that a little bit more in layman's terms as well?
So, the way that our system works is it's taking a picture of the back of a car, and we use what's called machine learning to identify the unique characteristics of the vehicle, so we can take aggregate data to make the algorithms better at identifying the make of a car, the color of a car. A car at dusk is a slightly different shade than during the, you know, at noon, and so being able to identify black versus blue versus gray, that's the type of data that's being used to improve the algorithms and their accuracy.
Okay, good. Then, I would just, on the, on the other point that was trying to be made here, I would say that the integrity of the data, and the integrity of the use of the data, and the oversight of the data by our leadership in the Normal Police Department was clearly outlined in the policy. And I too noted the accountability piece, the random checks, I thought that was, that was very good. I noted the fact that, to the point made earlier, that, you know, when a patrol officer would be out and sees, and notes a trigger of a license plate, that there was a chain of command that appeared to have to happen for further vetting. So, all of that is outlined in the policy, and I think all of us should take it upon ourselves to read it line by line, because it's very good, and it, and there are very, you know, legitimate questions out there that our familiarity with that policy would, would serve us well. So, I do trust our police department. I do want to back law enforcement and give you the best tools possible. Thank you.
Further, Lorenz? Mr. Nord?
Sure, thank you. The policy is not to go over whatever the posted speed limit is. Without our police to enforce that, you know, the outside control, then people don't follow the policy. We've got a finance department who has outside audits. Flock has outside people coming in to, you know, look at their systems as well. So, that's all I'm asking for, is some outside independent body that's not worried about, hey, if this comes out, do I have to worry about keeping my job? You know, I want that independence from there. And, you know, like I say, I support the police, but we need that outside independent audit to hold people accountable, because it may not be the department today, it may be the department 30 years from now, whenever a problem happens. Thank you.
Mr. McCarthy?
Thanks, Chief, and staff, for, I'm sure, what's been an exhausting week of council questions, and inquiries, under a microscope and a magnifying glass, and secret decoder rings to try to understand everything that's going on. I guess I just, if I want to raise the camera up for a second, then I do have some specific things to focus on. You know, our job up here, as I see it, is to balance the desire to utilize contemporary tools, help solve crime and increase and enhance public safety in our community, with fear, real or imagined, about protecting privacy and aggregated data. This is the front edge of, of technology today. How do we keep information safe while benefiting from the toolset? And so, on, on some degree, that's the difficult conversations that we have. So, on our side, we have to have policy, that's what we are here for, and Chief has detailed, from an internal controls perspective, policies that help ensure that, just as much as we need technical systems that we heard about just a little bit ago, that ensure privacy and security. As, as, if you're watching at home or in the audience here, what you heard is that we've considered both, and not just one, that we've taken a more holistic approach here to look at policy, and as one of my colleagues mentioned, it talks about random audits, internal controls, just like finance systems that were outlined or mentioned a little bit ago. What financial auditors do is come inside and make sure that there's internal controls, and that's exactly what our policy has put in place, very similar type of an approach. Some of the concerns I heard in the lead up to this were about the privacy, personal information, privacy data, and I think from a internal control perspective, the random audits, those have been answered to my level of satisfaction. Actually, some of the questions that I had were more technical in nature, but one of my colleagues hit that. I was going to ask about, you'd expounded upon the AWS cloud and the government security stuff, but you pinged that, hit that, talked about the background checks and, and the Flock side. And as much as we've thought, put a policy together that's thoughtful on our internal controls, we also have the technical concerns in hacking and malware and ransomware and the like. And so, I was pleased to hear some of your answers also coming out to that as well. I guess, you know, on, on the audit side, that we have people that are assigned to audit our own folks and our own processes, our own access is really, really important, and that there's technical provision for that. In other words, if somebody's hitting our data, we're going to know, and we're going to know who. And so, there's a technical side, and there's a policy side that goes in and says, hey, we're going to check this periodically and randomly to ensure that those that are accessing our information are in fact authorized. And it's great that we've also had the conversation to allay some fears that private entities could access our public information, and that they're separated both technically and by policy and by process. And so, I think the fears and questions have been well addressed. As to the analogies about speed limit signs, you know, speed limit signs aren't access control points in software and not technical systems. You know, there's 455 lane miles of roadway in, in Normal, and I don't know how many traffic speed limit signs that equals, but there's one way to access our data, and they have to have a username and password to do that, and that's easily verifiable, and we've got policy in place. So, I don't have those concerns. I must admit, initially, I had data privacy concerns, but for Chief taking the time and staff taking the time to answer those questions and hear the public fears that we were hearing, and, and sit and take time to explain to us, so that we can understand it, and we can, is, been a good and right approach for our community as we test out the waters of this system. So, thanks. With that, I'm supportive.
Mr. Preston?
Thanks, Mayor. I am glad, excuse me, I am glad that, to hear a lot of discussion up here about personal privacy and data privacy and security, as that is something that I'm confident all of us around this table, and I'm sure both of you sitting before us have heard a lot about, and it's something that all of us should care about. Frankly, if people, you know, looked at things like their own phone with that same lens, you know, imagine what different, just a different, different landscape we would be in, I think, all the way around. you know, imagine what different, just a different landscape we would be in, I think, all the way around. One of the things that I really like is that when there are concerns about privacy and there's concerns about data security, that rather than just coming and saying, yeah, we got it, and, you know, trust us, this is all like within our control and we'll take care of it. We did a work session last meeting or two meetings ago. We have a written policy that is on paper, that is part of this process. We have a Flock representative who can speak to more of the technical side of it as well here tonight. And those are all things that we don't go through on every issue. I think that it is, kudos, Chief, to you as much as anybody, that those are part of this conversation. And it is not lost on me how, with good reason overall, and it's a good, on principle, it's a good thing, but still, how much additional scrutiny and a magnifying glass, any decision made by police to try and keep our community safe, how many just process and hurdles potentially there are to go through that, just to be able to do your jobs to keep the rest of us safe. So, thanks for what you guys are doing and how this is all packaged and presented, certainly in support of helping our men and women in blue.
Ms. Cummings?
I don't want to be laborless, but please, I do have one quick question. Because I know we've, there's been talk about some of the external quote-unquote audits. And I know CLEIA was also one of the groups that had some weigh-in on this. Because of their weigh-in, do they include that when they do our audits as well? Or is that they don't look at that portion of what we do as a police department? Is that just something that they weigh in on and not include in the process of auditing?
They wouldn't per se be doing an audit, but the Commission on Police Accreditation, that was one of the first things I did, was pull their standards on LPR cameras to see what were the standards that they needed to see from the police department. And it revolved around exactly what all of you brought up today, data retention, auditing, a lot of the same things that we've discussed today. So just made sure that our policy encompassed all the best practices from CLEIA so we could ensure that we had a good policy.
Thank you.
And just to be clear, CLEIA, it's an acronym that we use quite frequently. It's Commission for the Accreditation of Law Enforcement Agencies, and that's the organization that we have worked with for a couple of decades regarding accreditation.
Please call a roll.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
No.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Cummings?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye. The resolution is approved. Item 10 is an ord, and thank you, gentlemen, for the information. Item 10 is an ordinance amending the FY 2021-22 operating and capital investment budget.
Move approval?
Second.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'll just introduce this item and then be happy to answer any questions council may have. This is an annual action. We ask of council to approve all, to formally approve all the budget modifications that were made the previous fiscal year. So what we're talking about specifically is fiscal year '21-'22, that ended March 30th, 2022. And now that we have closed our books for last fiscal year, this is a report to let you know where we formally ended up. And so your approval is required to close out the books from last year. Basically, what we're doing, there's a lot of information in this three and a half pages. And so, in summary, what we're reporting to you is, again, how we ended up financially in all of our accounts. Meaning, when we say all funds, it's all of the funds for the organization. We ended in a positive situation. And specifically, then, we point out how the general fund ended. As council knows, the general fund is what supports most of the municipal operations side of things. We ended up with a healthy surplus. We're not proposing tonight any conversation about how to allocate those surplus funds, but basically just reporting to you that we did end the general fund with a significant surplus. And we tried to highlight where some of the revenues increased, where some of our expenses were under budget and resulting in that surplus. So would be happy to answer questions. I know there's a lot in this report, but this is something that you see on an annual basis.
Questions or concerns?
Ms. Smith?
Mr. Yoon was gracious enough to speak to me as a fellow accountant to help me understand why we were messing with a budget when in financial accounting, we focus on the actual transactions. And if I could have him, with Ms. Reese's permission, just highlight in fund accounting, why this attention to budget accuracy at the end of the year to reflect actual, the actual situation.
Sure.
Mr. Yoon is going to join us and give that basic information about where we're at and why we do this. And as Finance Director, he's deep in these numbers, so.
Thank you. So this is a unique report, and I appreciate the conversation we had with City Mayor Reese and Councilman Smith on this earlier today. So the council, as you know, approves the budget for every year. So in March of '21, you approve the budget for '21-'22 fiscal year. During the fiscal year, we do a fair amount of budget adjustments as things come up, new grants, new capital projects, revenue enhancements, cuts in expenditures. We go to the budget work session during the year, '21-'22 for '22-'23, and we do estimate changes and so forth. So we do all that through budget adjustments. Now, essentially, the budget process, you know, it comes to me first. I review it, it goes to the City Manager's Office, they review it, and then we post it in the system. However, the council is the body who approves the budget, the adopted budget. So we have to come back at the end of the year and say, here's all the adjustments that we've made. They've been vetted from the departments, from the Department of Finance, from the City Manager's Office. Now they need to have final approval from this governing board. And that's what this report's doing. It's talking about the differences in changes from fund balance to changes in capital projects, to moving money between funds. So it's a unique report in the sense that it's reporting mechanically the summarization of every transaction we've had for the budget for the entire fiscal year. You can't necessarily glean from this the financial position, at least for, at a total town-wide fund level, because many of the funds interact as kind of intercompany transactions. However, we like to give the council a little more information, as City Manager Reese mentioned. So at the end of the report, we talk first about all the changes. We highlight what some of the changes are, to give you a sense of what some of the big changes were. Most of them are things like paying off debt or carrying over money from one year to the next for capital projects, a new grant for ARPA, and so forth. But general fund is our operating fund. So at the end of the report, we talk about, hey, we're discussing all these budget adjustments. You're going to be approving them all as a governing body. How are we looking going forward, general fund, for next fiscal year? And we know that right now. If we have closed the books, we're going to audit right now, but we'll validate that. So that part of the report gives you a sense of where we're at for general fund, which is the major operating fund for the town. And as Pam mentioned, the report reports about a $7.5 million surplus. Now, that puts us into some nice financial flexibility for the budget coming up. This report's meant to, again, give you a coalesced version, a summarized version of all the budget adjustments in all funds, and then also give you a sense of where we stand for general fund, which is the major operating fund. And that we kind of get to on the budget side of this thing and also the financial analysis side of it. So general fund's moving into the budget year in a pretty good position, a very strong position, that's resulting from significant increases in revenue opposed to our expectation, some savings in expenses for sure. And as City Manager Reese mentioned, it'll be part of a very in-depth conversation on how to use that surplus as part of the budget process coming up.
Thank you, Mr. Yoon. Other questions or comments? Mr. Nord?
Thank you. The surplus that we could tell our constituents is what dollar amount?
7.5 billion.
7.5 million. All right. And then, a question on one fund. So the underpass fund, $4.7 million. Is that money that we're putting into that fund from last year? Are we increasing that dollar amount from whatever it was before?
Sure, so that's kind of a new fund. It was essentially established during fiscal '21-'22, so there was no budget approved in that year for the adopted budget. However, in mid-year, we discovered, we accepted the grant, so we established a fund for the underpass. We did create, we did transfer funds from general fund into the underpass fund to create a budget of revenue there, I think it was 4.7, if I can...
Correct, yes, it is.
We also established about a $3 million budget in that fund for that fiscal year. Now, that's not the entire budget for that fund. That's a multi-year project. We just went ahead and put in some money for '21-'22 in terms of revenue and expense. That fund is a standalone fund, so that money remains there. And then, of course, as we go into this current fiscal year and out, as we start to spend those funds, you'll see more. But it's a $22, $23 million plus operation that we budgeted. We only show a little bit in this first, in that fiscal year.
So for that underpass fund, those $4.7 million, are those dollars from local sources?
That is a combination of what we expected to receive in grant funds in that fiscal year. I don't think we received anything at this point in time. And also, we transferred about $1.4, $1.5 million from general fund, the town's, at that time, the town's known share of the project. The rest of it's budgeted in the out-years in terms of expected grant funding and also expected spending. So it's, at this point, it's, when we did that transfer and that setup of the fund in '21-'22, you know, we just put some money in there as a placeholder.
Okay, so then, like, back in July of last year, council approved $1.92 million to go into the... That was going to be the local source, or the local... That was going to be the town's share of the underpass for the total project. We're not increasing any of our local dollars. All those other dollars going in are from grant sources from outside of just the town, local taxpayer dollars, correct?
Well, if we do change that budget, it'll be part of the budget process. But right now, this report is not reporting anything like that. This report is only showing what we put in as of last fiscal year in terms of our expected revenue from the grant, the town's contribution, and then also potential expenditures for last year.
All right, and the town's contribution has not increased?
Not as of this date, no.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions on this?
In terms of us making the transfer.
Ms. Smith?
I just want some clarification provided so that as a council, we are tasked with approving budget to give the town the authority to operate. If we fail to approve budget amounts, the town is in a situation, as the state of Illinois was under two years of the previous administration, where the state had, was tied in releasing funds to organizations that were in need and reliant on those dollars. So you're not asking us to do anything new here. You're simply asking to fulfill our responsibility to recognize that these changes in expectations from projected to now end-of-year budgets are finalized and the transfers have been made, and you're just making us aware of that.
Correct.
Please call a roll.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Cummings?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye. That ordinance amendment is approved, or the ordinance amending is approved. We have one item of new business, a motion to approve reappointment to the Connect Transit and an appointment to the Historic Preservation Commission.
Move approval?
Second.
Second, are there comments or questions on this? Mr. Nord?
Has the public been informed of the folks that are going to be appointed to represent their interests?
They will be. In fact, we need to announce that as part of the motion. So as discussed, every time we have an appointment on the agenda, Mr. Nord, our process has not changed.
Okay, then, the public doesn't know who's going to be representing them. We've got things going before the Planning Commission, and the public has no idea or has no input to the folks who are on the Planning Commission, Connect Transit, they have no input. The Historic Preservation Commission, they have no input. And they have no ability to provide public comment for the very people that I've heard folks on this council say that these folks are representing the citizens, but the citizens have no input at all. So for that, you know, I disagree. There are other municipalities that do let the citizens know who it is they're going to appoint to represent their interests. And I think it's just not right that it happens here. Mr. Mayor, you've been recommended to be appointed to the Antrag Board. You know, that has been public knowledge, you know, and people have the opportunity to speak on that. You know, this is just very unique that we don't do that here.
Before taking the vote, Mr. McCarthy, would you let people know who we're appointing?
Absolutely. The mayor's recommending for the Historic Preservation Commission, Mr. Robert Porter. He's a local attorney with 10 years' experience working in our community. He's been with the law firm of Costigan and Olrab since 2012, a partner since 2019, a grad of the University of Illinois College of Law. Try not to hold that against him. He's demonstrated community service. He's been very involved over the last several years, including current membership on the Board of the McLean County Historical Society, the Illinois Symphony Orchestra Board as well. He's also a member of the Local Bar Association and the Illinois Guardianship Association. He'll be filling the seat formerly held by local attorney Todd Bug, whose term expires on March 31st of 2023. We are reappointing to the Connect Transit Board Julie Hile, who's been a longtime member of the Connect Transit Board, well-known in the community, and her term will expire on June 30th of 2026.
Please call a roll.
Mr. Nord?
No.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Cummings?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye. Those appointments are approved. We have no public comment at the end of the meeting before taking a motion for adjournment, or their concerns or comments.
Mr. McCarthy?
Thank you. I just want to draw attention to something that slipped quietly through the night in our bills a few weeks ago. And, you know, we oftentimes, particularly during campaign season, hear about the town's debt. And not too long ago, a little over a year ago, led by Mr. Yoon and the Finance Department and staff, we created a new approach to managing our debt. And we set a target of June of 2022 to retire the 2012 $8 million, $8-point-something-million-dollar bond debt. And we did that. And so the town paid off over an $8 million debt and with no fanfare, no public notice, no wild party, but just was listed in the bills. And so I thought that I personally am excited when those things happen, and I think it deserves as much attention as the total amount of debt that we have. And now we're $8 million less in debt. So I appreciate staff's work on that and my council's work, fellow council members' work to make sure that we got that done. So thank you all.
Thank you. Ms. Smith?
Two items of public notice. The town does have a survey outstanding currently to solicit feedback and opinions about the development south of the tracks. And that survey is due to close. Ms. Reese, I hate to catch you off-guard, but when is that?
Well, I hate to be the wet blanket on this one, but it actually closed last night, so I apologize for that. However, there will be... so I apologize for that however there will be a public meeting July 28th so we will be pushing out information for the public to join us for a discussion rather than the survey so.
Okay then tonight you're not going to steal my thunder on this one Hope for the Warriors is a national nonprofit they're returning to the corn crib July 21st and 22nd from 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM and they're collecting contributions to support housing utilities transportation and adaptive equipment for our veterans Cities 92.9 will be broadcasting from there for 36 hours so if you want to support this worthwhile cause please head out to the corn crib on those days to do that and this weekend in Normal the Children's Discovery Museum is having their festival in Uptown Normal so come to that on Saturday. Thank you.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Thank you. I have a comment that I want to serve as a reminder and also a thank you to the staff and it has to do with quality of life and just what a let's remind ourselves what a good place this really is and by that I'm going to delve a little bit into a story I had a major event in my family this past week and my daughter got married and we hosted a rather large party in celebration and probably had anywhere from I'm thinking 50 to maybe 75 out of town guests here in in Normal and kind of ground zero from many of the hotel accommodations was right here in Uptown hopefully that didn't cause any problems to our public safety chief but at any rate what it reminded me of was the importance and the impact of our decisions for quality of life so many of these out of town guests almost kind of like you know the prophet from another land sometimes you know takes people from out of town to really open your eyes and remind you of something so many of these guests came up to me and my husband and our family and just said wow what a fun place this is there were guests that arrived on Wednesday and Thursday they took part in some of the music on the circle they enjoyed the walkability they loved the access to the trail many of them you know found a way to get between Normal and Bloomington and so were experiencing some of the shops and and restaurants and so forth in Bloomington so they were just really enamored by our town and by the corn and the soybean too by the way but you know they were just they were just amazed I don't know what they were thinking about a you know small to medium sized town in central Illinois but we blew them away and so it served as an important reminder to me and I wanted to share that with all of you tonight and staff you know councils before us clearly led the way on placing an importance on place making right you know with the circle and with Uptown and the vision for it but subsequent councils including this one have had to nurture that policy along the way and you know we've taken a thousand lashes and sometimes even given ourselves a thousand lashes for you know spending money on on something that seemed like a want and not a need or a luxury project and you know I'm here to say we can walk and chew gum at the same time we're taking care of our infrastructure we're taking care of our roads now nobody did respond or say anything good or bad about our roads so if Mr. Otto is here I'm sorry Jason I see you over there they didn't say anything about the roads good or bad you know but they sure did like our amenities and they sure thought that this was a great place and many of these visitors were the 20-somethings who began to ask me a lot of questions about you know like what's the rent here and what's the cost of living and almost kind of probing questions that I thought you know maybe they're thinking about moving here and you know it just made me so proud for what we have accomplished and and a lot of that's happened at this level here at the policy level but you know what it gets carried out and brought to life day in and day out and I don't see anybody from cultural arts here but you know thank you to them for arranging the various festivals and music acts and so forth and thank you to park maintenance for making the place look nice and the plantings and to public safety for making it feel like a safe place that they could walk around at night so I just wanted to take that moment that my eyes were opened reopened and I wanted to share that with you it was a really really cool moment to have probably a couple of dozen people come up to me throughout 72 hours and say you've got a great town so let's not forget that.
Ms. Cummings?
Well I was going to talk about the Children's Discovery Museum because that's always near and dear to my heart and I will actually be volunteering as I do every year so I was going to share that but Councilmember Smith stole my thunder so everybody have a good night.
Mr. Preston?
Thanks Mayor. After that excellent lead in my only comment tonight is a point of personal privilege to congratulate Councilwoman Lorenz on the new addition by marriage to their family this weekend with their daughter's marriage congratulations.
Thank you.
And thank you Councilmember Preston for stealing my thunder.
You are welcome.
We're reading each other's minds.
Thank you. Just wanted to ask the public hearing for the sign ordinance do we know what day that is that we can let the public know?
It would be the first Thursday following the first Monday in August so let me take a quick look at my calendar here and it's posted on the town's website I believe it would be Thursday August 4th yes Thursday August 4th and that convenes at 5 o'clock PM in this room which is the fourth floor of Uptown Station.
Thank you.
Ms. Reese?
Just a couple of things that I wanted to highlight thank you all for your comments I did want to point out that while we didn't I guess promote the payoff of the 2012 bond issue I did want to remind council that it was your efforts to adopt a debt restructure plan and it was staff's pleasure to implement the plan and so I just appreciate council's forward looking and forward thinking when we talked about what the town's debt picture looks like when we laid out that plan about a year or two ago so that's exciting that we continue to move forward with that. I did want to highlight one other event that happened this weekend not to the significance of the Lorenz family but the Parks and Recreation Department and the town Normal actually hosted a very large disc golf tournament was very popular we hosted at Maxwell Park over 350 disc golf disc golfers is that what you call I suppose that's what you call disc golfers and between Wednesday and Saturday so it was a very popular event appreciate Parks and Rec and the entire team being prepared for that and we're not yet finished with the disc golf renovations of the course but we're soon going to be concluding that and Parks and Rec is happy to have those sorts of large events out there so thank you to Parks and Rec and just wanted to make sure the the council was aware of that because it was one of those events that kind of stayed under the radar.
Thank you. Motion for adjournment please.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Cummings?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss? Aye. We are adjourned.